Recording. Did you hit that one? There we go. There, you're on video now. You're good. Tony, you're on, on video.
I'm on video now?
Yeah, but your voice is coming through the phones, which is fine. That works.
Okay, I still have, still have a lot of feedback.
Probably because your, your sound is probably on your computer. Mute your computer and just talk through the phone. Your phone's muted now, though. Phone's still muted. Now mute. Can you, you can hear me, right? Shake your head if you can hear me.
I can hear you now.
Yep, and now you should be able to speak. Are you getting the feedback? Has the feedback stopped?
Now it's stopped, it's okay now.
Okay, lost your screen.
I think I had two versions of the.
All right, we lost your video feed, though. Not that it matters, I mean, you can. There you go.
Yeah, I think I had two versions of the.
Meeting going.
Meeting going at the same time. I'm sorry about that.
All good.
Okay. Go ahead and get started.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the Berlin Town of, Town of Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for October 26, 2021. It's 7:08 PM. And this is being held via Zoom conference call. Essentially, we have two portions to the meeting. What we'll be doing is going and reviewing the applications in the order that they're received. We'll be receiving, reviewing the applications under new business and having a discussion on each application. The applicant has requested to provide some background and provide some information regarding their application. And once their information is presented, we will vote to, we'll have a question and answer session, and then we'll vote to approve the information that was received. And then, once we hear all the applications, and the applications have been gone through and closed out, closed the hearing on the applications, what we'll do is open up new business and vote on the applications at hand. So basically, we're listening to the applications upfront, getting all the information that we can, close the hearing on the applications, and then at the end, in the second half of the meeting, we're voting on the applications. Any questions on that? From anybody? If not, I'll go through the first application. It's ZBA.
Tony, can I take the role? Can I take the role first, please?
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. And I'll just additionally note that the access to the meeting is being held in person as well as accessed by Zoom remote video and conference call and was posted as such with those links provided on the agenda and on the legal notice. If you're not speaking, if you can mute your phones or devices so that we can don't get any feedback, that would be great. Just remember to unmute. The, I'll take the role now, Corey Whiteside. Chairman Frank Langia.
President.
Leonard Tubbs. Christine Mizada.
Present.
Ryan Zelik.
Present.
And Hunter Mathina, who I also do not see. So you have a quorum with Commissioner Tubbs, Chairman Frank Langia, Commissioner Whiteside, alternate Ryan Zelik, and alternate Christine Mizada.
Correct. Thank you, Maureen.
Now, I do have two other announcements if I can. Well, Carol will make a comment, I think, on both of them. So read that. For 345 Corrad Road. Jamie Calvo sent us an email, "I would like to get an extension to the November meeting. I didn't get my letters out in the mail soon enough, and I apologize for that." So he would like that item continued. And 1427 Berlin Turnpike, I believe in your package I included his request for continuance as well. They are applying to the zoning board, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approvals that might rectify their violation, notice of violation that they are appealing. And staff has no objection to that because the application did come in to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. With that being said, we can table both of these, continue both of these applications that are the first two to the next meeting, ZBA 2021-22, 345 Corrad Road, and ZBA 2021-23, 1427 Berlin Turnpike. Both of these applications can be continued to the November meeting. Do I have a motion to approve that? I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Maureen, please take a roll.
If it's unanimous, I don't need to do a roll call. So if you just ask if anyone's opposed, if someone's opposed, I'll do the roll.
Do we have any opposition to that? Not hearing any.
Can we just solidify that they're both being continued to the November 23rd, 2021 meeting?
Correct.
And announcing that at this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, our next application is ZBA 2021-24, 122 Mill Street, map 10-3, block 86, lot 1B. George Bacacas is requesting a variance for 135 square foot freestanding sign, 17 square feet plus 7.84 square foot per tenant. When 72 square feet plus 2 square feet per tenant, currently 100 square feet, was granted by previous variance and 40 square feet is allowed in the CCD 2 zone for Berlin zoning regulation 4A6 on a non-conforming structure. Property is owned by Bacacas Realty LLC. And speaking for this application.
Good evening, everyone. My name is George Bacacas. I'm a member of Bacacas Realty at 122 Mill Street in Berlin. The reason for my appeal, we, as a team, are trying to make several renovations for our property. As you all are aware, the sign that's currently up on the, in front of the plaza, is outdated, is an eyesore, and it needs a little love. We've made applications to make those renovations. However, we found out that there was a variance for 100 square feet. The current sign that's up there is a, we did a measurement with our vendor, it's 144 square feet. And what we started with before we found out the variance, we wanted to reduce it to 135 square feet. So all of our tenants could have equal signage. Currently, the sign is not equitable for all of our tenants. We have 14 units on this property. We have a lot of, we have a section of the property, at least more than a third, that has no frontage. So that sign is, is very important. We are asking the board for the 35 additional square feet to the sign, and we would like to also make sure that the sign is lit internally instead of having a spotlight. So the sign could be equally.
Yeah. For them to ask questions. So if staff can give a little bit of background on this, I think it would be helpful to everyone. A little different way we're holding the meeting tonight. Funny to, to be doing this. And I don't know, do you want to speak on, on the existence of the existing sign and its nonconformity? And, or I'll run with it as best I can. Carol did do a lot of the background. But the existing sign was approved by variance back in 1975, I believe, '72, and was going to be, that sign allowed the directory sign plus 2 square feet per tenant. And basically, it was 14 tenants, but it only noted the, the size for each tenant being 2 square feet. It didn't note how many tenants there were. And that sign totaled 72, or 100 square feet. The CCD 2 zone allows for 40 square feet. The location of the sign and size has increased beyond that 100 square feet. It's currently 135? Is that?
144.
144 is the current sign. That was enlarged without the town's knowledge of the increase of size. The it's currently, or there, I guess I'd ask for clarification from the applicant. We understood that the top of the sign only, the directory portion, would be illuminated internally, and the remainder of the sign would be illuminated from the ground where the tenant signs are. If you can just clarify for the commission.
There was that, I will confirm that, there we did. You know, we started the plan where we would have a sign, a light of shining from the ground. However, looking at the competition and the other landowners, the majority of their signs are lit in the cabinet, and we felt that it would be appropriate to light it up as, as well. And of course, to conform with the light pollution policy of the town.
So if that's the case where the entire sign will be illuminated, then for zoning purposes, we'll need calculations from the sign company before a sign permit would be issued that it meets the two-thirds. There's a white, white ratio in the regulations. I believe it's less than one-third of an illuminated white background. And the sign proposed is white. I'm sorry, on the screen right now, it was scanned black and white because of the machine we had to use yesterday. But in your packets, you do have the color versions, I believe. No, you don't have the color versions.
We are.
We do not have the color version.
So I'm sorry about that. I'll see if I can.
What was the matter about the white? We noted that we are not going to be using white. We are going to use a tint of light gray so we can, you know, we use the amount of white light that comes out of that sign. Again, the majority of that sign is not going to be shining like a shining star as we, you know, we want it to be, and it will be eventually. But we would like to, you know, conform to those, those rules.
This applicant, or the, the, we have gotten proposals for this sign a number of times in my tenure with the town. And the most recent application was this past spring where Adam, as the zoning officer, did deny this, this sign as not meeting the regulations nor the existing variance that was approved back in the 70s. So this is then that up as a variance. And again, the location is also nonconforming, it's a nonconforming structure. And that, it's on a state road, so its positioning would be up to, they're not changing its position, they're not proposing any change to the stanchions. They're going to use the existing stanchions from what I was told. And but the, the state would be the one to comment on whether that's the setback or lack thereof is appropriate for them. This is the location, the sign appears to have been approved originally.
Just, I just wanted to comment, if I can. So the, the thing about our plaza is we have an actual traffic signal right at that sign. So there, that doesn't, the sign does not cause any blind spot. I mean, throughout the years, as you can see, I mean, if you see it on the map, there's, it does not cause a blind spot. And as you, as you noticed, we are reducing square footage from, again, from what we thought was appropriate. And we, I personally took over the, you know, took the section of the membership of the property back in 2013, and we didn't really realize that, you know, we were nonconforming from the get-go. And my father bought the plaza back in 2004, I believe, I can't really say what. And, you know, it's been in the family for a long period of time. But we were never aware that that existed, and I'm sure we were supposed to know that. But again, at this point, we just want to fix the sign so it won't be an eyesore for the town and for the, for our tenants. Make sure, making sure that we have equitable signage on it.
One of the, one of the things that the sign, we see your property used a lot, a lot of signs that aren't yours. And I know that's one of the issues that is always being brought to the zoning enforcement. Sign proposing compared to what we had there for. I think there's a lot of that that I can remember. Looks to be a drastic improvement. But what I would like to see is to maybe police it, or what if we do approve this, make sure you police it on the other signs away from there.
So we are, you know, every time there's a new tenant comes in, for example, we had a Neil Salam that moved over in ownership. We required that he come to the town. They did. And I did get an email from a gentleman named Paul, asking if I were, you know, to get my permission to let them apply for the sign because on their lease, and every tenant's lease, they're required to abide by the town's regulations. You know, moving forward, we're definitely going to be policing that because, again, we would like to make sure our plaza looks tidy. And also, we would like to be more not a nice or, but we definitely want to abide by the rules. That's definitely a requirement, of course.
Can I just add, if I, and I don't want to speak for Commissioner Tubbs, but if I understood his comment correctly, it's not the signs that they came in for as permanent signs, but some of those temporary and lawn signs and banners, those are the signs that, that we're addressing as illegal signs that are on the property regularly.
You do approve this, also be blocking after the signing you're trying to put up and get for your tenants.
Yeah, so right now, the only signs we have there is, we have a temporary tenant who's running for office. They have their signs there, by their, by the rules of our lease, they're required to put up whatever permit that they need for their signage. They're responsible, it says it in their lease. But if they are, if any tenant is not following those rules, clearly, we're going to tell them. Listen, there's a sign there, you need to put it up on this man, not up front. I agree with you.
If I could help Chairman Frank Langia out a little bit. Chris Edge, Director of Economic Development, is raising his hand to speak.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention that I've been working with the Bacacas family for some time. I think this is a great opportunity here. They're going to be making an investment improvements and have some consistent signage. Where right now, as you see the signage, it's kind of all over the place. So I would love to see this happen. I know he is asking for a variance above and beyond, but I think it's a nice opportunity for having better signage here, and I know they are making a large investment to improve the plaza and the sign. Thank you.
What the question I have is that there's a, this, this new sign looks like it has a location for 14 14 signs below the main sign. This is Berlin Central Plaza, and then there's 14 locations.
Correct.
Okay. How many, how many rental locations are in Berlin Central Plaza?
So we have 14 units, 14 doors. Some of our tenants have a combined unit, for example, are, you know, the, the unit that was the Big Z cleaners is no longer with us due to, because of the COVID. That was considered one unit, but technically it is two units. So we are currently doing some renovations, and we're going to, you know, we want to make sure that every single door, storefront has their own sign. So technically, we do have it because the tentacle in the back, she has three units. So let's say, you know, she has, you know, she pays for the square footage, she has, she has three rooms.
Okay.
If I may, this is Maureen speaking again. I just want to point out the, again, the size of the sign being currently 144. Proposed at 135, permitted by the variance that exists, 100, albeit was specifically divided. And that allowed in the zone is 40 square feet. So they would be allowed 40 square feet, and they're asking for a sign of, well, they're, they're currently allowed 100 square feet, and they're asking for a sign of 135. So each tenant getting the seven square feet of signage in their current proposal.
Correct. Corey, I noticed that you're speaking, but I'm not hearing you.
So sorry, this is Commissioner Whiteside, just a follow-on question to Maureen's comment was that, or she asked a question whether this is going to be internally lighted. The proposal in the application shows that it's not. It's only the internally illuminated from the top, or at the top. Can you just confirm that for the, from the applicant? And then, Maureen, you said that it's a separate permitting for the internally illuminated part to get the permit for that square, or the, the proportional white area, right?
So currently, the sign is not, so regardless, they require a building permit for a sign, for the refurbishing of the sign and new faces. The existing sign is only illuminated at the top, correct?
No illumination at all.
Okay, but there, I believe there is, there's ground illuminated.
The hurricane that tore it up.
Right, so it has the electricity, but only going to the top. The rest of the sign are sign panels that are not illuminated. This application would be to illuminate it, and therefore, they are have to meet the regulation that, that's for the percentage of white on an internally illuminated sign. And that's why he's indicated that the background has been modified to be a grayish tone.
But the application says that, or, well, I guess I'm reading the staff comments, that tenant panels are proposed to be externally illuminated from the ground.
Yes, that was the proposed. So that is the way it was noticed. Is that the point? I believe that's the point you're making. It was noticed for a illumination is not noted.
The lighting really isn't in the variance purview, though. Like a variance is just for the square footage.
Correct.
Okay.
So this is not internally illuminated?
It will be internally illuminated.
Okay, all right.
The reason why, again, I apologize about, I, you made that change, but we were trying to get everything into the town, and it's just, we forgot to change that part, that's why I brought it up today in the meeting.
I guess the only comment I have is if we're going to do this right, let's do it right the first time. Okay, any other questions?
Should ask for public comment. I know you're not sitting here, so you can't tell us what we have, but we do have an audience, so.
Yeah, any comments, comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition to the application?
I'm not seeing any.
I know we've heard staff comments, are there any additional comments from staff?
Do you have any additional comments? Talk to the microphone, if you have any additional comments.
No. Staff report covered the comments.
Okay, so we can entertain a motion to close the hearing on this application if that's, if that's okay with everybody.
Make a motion to close this portion of the hearing.
I second.
A motion made and seconded, all in favor? Mary?
Aye.
Aye. Ryan?
Aye.
And Corey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Maureen, I think you've got it all right.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, so it's unanimously closed now.
Okay. Our next application is ZBA-2021-25, 119 Webster Square Road, Unit 151, map 10-3, block 83, dash 28, lot 1A. Merle McKenzie Truck Bar 2 LLC is requesting the sales of alcoholic beverages' location approval for a restaurant liquor permit for the truck bar per Berlin zoning regulation 11B. Property is open, is owned by OSJ LLC. Speaking for the application.
Merle McKenzie, 1183 Killenworth Road, in Connecticut, and Truck Bar LLC. So I'm here to apply for a restaurant alcohol permit for the truck bar LLC at 119 Webster Square Road. We were previously here several months back, getting permission to have our entertainment use permitted, and it was granted. But according to the current codes in Berlin, we needed to apply secondarily for the alcohol permit. So that's what we're here to do.
If I may, I'll clarify that he had gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission for his, for the approval of the, the use at that location for this entertainment center facility. And as part of their proposal for the entertainment facility, they are requesting the restaurant liquor permit, which is under the purview of the zoning board of appeals. So they did get the, the approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission for their use and to have started renovations and are well on their way as far as that goes. They'll have, when you describe your facility a little bit.
So it's a truck-themed entertainment facility that will feature cornhole as its primary activity, leagues, birthday parties. Sorry, I had surgery earlier, I'm a little bit. Video games, live music, and a square plate pizza.
Thought your floor plan might help you.
Just a little tired from today's activities.
The.
These are some considerable changes to what you're going to have in this.
Absolutely, no, it's exactly the same.
I remember a volleyball court outside.
So that was a different tenant? Or a different, it was a different? So that was a different tenant for a different, it was a different, um, yeah, so. So this is a new tenant. They will be entirely inside except for some outdoor tables out front for seating. They will not be using the pad between the two, the two buildings that is currently fenced. They will not be occupying that, at least not at this time. If they expand to it or anything changes with them, increasing their square footage further, um, we'll evaluate what, what approvals are necessary at that time. Um, but that application you saw for the last entertainment center was, uh, was called Fun Hub and it was a different entity with a different business model. Again, an entertainment space regardless. Or an entertainment category of use within the zoning regulations. Um, staff did go through the, um, the liquor permit, um, checklist and found no conflicts for this type of permit at this location.
I noticed that this, uh, the backer for this is, uh, Montana Nice. Are you gonna have axe throwing there as well?
I am not. It's not allowed by the owners of the property. I would if I could, but they don't have to, they don't want it.
Oh, okay. The only question I had. Anybody have any other questions?
What are the proposed hours?
As a rule of thumb, four to ten on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, four to one P, uh, one AM on Friday, one PM to one AM on Saturday, and one PM to eight PM on Sunday. And we're reserving the right for private parties in the earlier part of the day. We do a lot of corporate stuff. So a group from whatever business will come with fifty people at eleven o'clock in the morning and you know, do a private business function when I saw on the days when we are not technically open to the public, we are open for private events.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Any comments in favor of the application from the public?
Chris is asking to speak.
Chris?
Hello, Chris Edge, um, town of Berlin, two forty Kensington Road. Um, yes, I have worked with, um, Merle, um, through the process of approval through planning and zoning. Uh, the nice thing too is this is going to be a combination of both family and adult entertainment at the location. Uh, has already run numerous locations. So unlike a previous applicant who was coming in for the first time, um, Mr. McKenzie has done this successfully elsewhere. So we're excited about that. It's gonna bring a vibrancy, more activity to the plaza and very excited to be speaking in support of the, uh, restaurant liquor permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any additional comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition to the application?
No one in the audience.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, uh, close the hearing on the application.
I'll second.
A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, Maureen, please take a roll.
Okay, um, Commissioner Tubbs? Close. Um, um, Commissioner Whiteside?
Hi.
Commissioner Zellik?
Hi.
Commissioner Mizata?
Hi.
And Chairman Frank Langia?
Hi. Okay, that, uh, application is closed, uh, going into, uh, old business. Application ZBA twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, uh, one twenty-two Mill Street, map ten dash three, block eighty-six, lot one B. George Bacacca is requesting a variance for a hundred and thirty-five square foot freestanding sign, seventeen square feet plus seven point eight four square feet per tenant, one seventy-two square feet plus two square feet per tenant, currently one hundred square feet, was granted by previous variance and forty square feet is allowed in the CCD two zone per Berlin zoning regulation four A six on a non-conforming structure. Property is owned by Bacacca Realty LLC, uh, a motion to approve this application.
Make a motion to approve this application, Mr. President.
Uh, I'll second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll second if you want.
Okay. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, Maureen, please take a roll.
I do. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, after seeing this sign like this for the last twenty-five plus years, I think it'll be a welcome change.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
All right, so I'll take the role, Chairman.
Sure.
Um, Commissioner Tubbs?
Hi.
Um, Chairman Frank Langia?
Hi.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Hi.
Mr. Zellik?
Hi.
Commissioner Mizata?
Hi.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Great, okay. Uh, ZBA twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five, one nineteen Webster Square Road, Unit one fifty-one, map ten dash three, block eighty-three dash twenty-eight, lot one A. Merle McKenzie Truck Bar Two LLC is requesting a sale of alcoholic beverages, location approval for a restaurant liquor permit for the truck bar per Berlin zoning regulation eleven B. Property is owned by OSJ LLC.
Make a motion to accept this application.
We have a motion made. Does anyone second?
I'll sec, I'll second, Commissioner Zellik.
I have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, uh, Maureen, can you take a roll? If all in favor?
Um, Commissioner Tubbs?
Hi.
Uh, Chairman Frank Langia?
Hi.
Mr. Whiteside?
Hi.
Commissioner Zellik?
Hi.
Commissioner Mizata?
Hi.
That's a unanimous vote.
Okay. Uh, we only have a couple of more items on the agenda. There was a, I, I, Maureen, I was, I had called you regarding this, but just to ask to get some clarification, but maybe you can give me the clarification right now. Uh, the executive session and public comment and possible action on proposed stipulation for judgment, uh, is this the, uh, um, the truck stop on Commerce Street?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Okay, uh, I don't know if you want to, can you, uh, are you allowed to elaborate on that at all?
Yeah, actually Corporation Counsel is here. Um, Jennifer Capola is present to discuss and, um, have you determined whether or not you want to go into the executive session or not, or, you know, and continue? She's been in, um, correspondence with the opposing counsel and, um, I think she'll be the one elaborating.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everyone. Tonight, it's been a while since I've been at a meeting. Again, for the record, it's Jennifer Capola from Seal or Monopoly Corporation Council for the town. Um, Mr. Tubbs, we've not met before. Nice to meet you. Um, so this matter has been pending in Newbury Superior Court. It does concern, um, Mr. Chair, the property that you mentioned. And, um, it's taken a long path since, uh, the applications that are the subject of the appeal. You had determined ultimately as the stipulation indicates not to put it down for hearing. Um, it was an enforcement matter, um, on which, uh, Mr. Juicy did issue a final notice. And, um, there were three applications that were made, uh, to cover the respective properties and then for interpretation applications. Um, so those are the applications that are involved in the appeal. The board decided not to hold a hearing because, uh, when the cease and desist order had initially been issued a couple of years before that, there was a hearing. Um, and, um, so it's been pending in court, um, and there was a, an application that was submitted to PNC, um, that PNC did not approve, um, and, uh, the plaintiff, the property of Commerce Street Holdings was looking to get another tenant. There were some, um, some amendments to zoning regulations with regard, uh, to outdoor storage. Ultimately, that tenant did not relocate to this property and now, uh, restoration plan to reestablish the vegetated buffer was submitted and you have a revised copy of that. It's one of the exhibits to, to the stipulated judgment. So at this point, um, we're looking to resolve the matter pursuant to the terms, uh, that are in this stipulation judgment. This is the town's proposed stipulated judgment, again, that I provided with counsel for Commerce Street Holdings. Uh, they, they have been unable, we were hopeful that we would have everything finalized through tonight. So if they had any response, um, that we would, we would have any additional revisions to this for you tonight and for the public tonight. Um, I am going to ask that you do continue this matter until, uh, your, your November twenty-third meeting. Uh, they have not been able, council has not been able to connect with his client on it. Um, I also see that there are no members of the public. I think that, uh, interested members of the public were notified by staff with regard to this, and I don't know whether we may not have some people here because of the weather anyway. Um, so again, I do recommend that you do continue it. We need to hear back from counsel. Um, and we will obviously include it again in a public notice. Now, in terms of your question, as far as an executive session, that's why I'm here. Um, because if you do want to ask me any particular questions about the stipulation, we've not met an executive session with regard to this and I happen to do so. So, um, if there are questions from, from the board, I do suggest that we do enter into executive session and what I will do. I didn't, I didn't realize that we would have so many, um, members not here in person. But what I can do is I can provide you with a telephone number to call in, um, if you just, again, if you do want to go into executive session, we can use my firm's conference call line to do that. So does anybody have any particular questions? If you have procedural questions, I can answer those questions outside of executive question, uh, outside of executive session, but if you have more questions of a substantive nature, it's probably best that we do enter executive session. And you can also wait until next month to do that, um, if you want to take a little bit more time to digest it as well. It's relatively straightforward. Um, really the heart of, uh, the stipulation is in paragraph seven. Too far. Yeah, we don't, we do not have, um, counsel present tonight. I do anticipate that they will be here on November twenty-third.
I, I guess I, I don't want to throw this back to Maureen, but, uh, my, my, uh, my question is to, uh, staff is to whether or not, uh, the, uh, the discussion in paragraph seven meets, uh, with, uh, requirements of the staff and whether or not, uh, the staff is, uh, amenable to all the items that are listed in paragraph seven.
So staff has worked closely with counsel as well as opposing counsel on, um, the, both the plan and the terms here and the recommendations of, um, the town's counsel with regard to them. Um, I, I think we're comfortable with it proposing to the opposing counsel, um, the, this as the stipulated judgment. I use my tone, stipulated judgment. Um, I do, you know, want to point out and re-clarify for anyone who may or may not have participated in one of the previous hearings on this matter or who might not, just might not remember. But, um, the reason it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission was, um, because the design and site plan items of the buffer itself would be a planning and zoning commission issue. So they reviewed that plan and those plantings, et cetera. The, however, it's the appeal of the ZBA's decision upholding the order and the order being that the buffer that was part of the previous variance, that the existing variance for the use of the property, um, was compromised. So the existence of the buffer and the terms of the agreement, um, uh, counsel can correct me if I misstate it, but that's the, what ZBA is looking at. The design of the planting plan is what Planning and Zoning Commission looked at. In the agreement, you'll see that there is, um, the provisions based on the zoning regulations for, um, bonding and maintenance bond for that buffer to become established.
Is the same company over here?
This is the same company that's been in there for a number of, that obtained the variance for the use on the property. Yes. Climate engineering and refrigeration, there's about, there's like five different entities there.
So, um, just again, just the, the restoration plan, the revised copy that you're seeing in, um, September twenty-first of this year, uh, did go through, uh, several revisions and, um, Mrs. Juicy provided comments at each stage. Um, and there was quite a bit of back and forth regarding to it. And again, I, I think, uh, it can, seeing as it's going to be continued, if you do have additional questions, uh, I do anticipate counsel for climate engineering or for the property or Commerce Street Holdings will be here, um, or participating remotely on November twenty-third. Um, so, you know, if you, if there are particular questions that you would like me to convey to him, I'm happy to do that. But I do anticipate that he will be present.
So as I ask, you want us to give you questions? Prior, so.
You certainly can. Um, I'm happy to, to convey any questions that you may have, um, to counsel. Sometimes that's a productive way of doing it. I'm happy to do that.
I also want to know.
If you think of anything between now and then, I can certainly circulate you. No, I'm sorry.
This is supposed to alleviate some of the view that everybody has. A lot of noise complaints that we constantly.
Um.
I mean, that's what, essentially that's what started it was the noise, if I remember correctly.
Correct, and remember, I'm years ago.
I believe the understanding is or the, um, proposed resolution is if, because the buffer was to not only, um, um, minimize view, but also minimize noise, you know, it's, well, it will. So if you look at the plan on the screen, there's, um, so, you know, the, all the dark is the new planting. And one of the requirement is that the understory, the things that are there that exist as trees, um, any, for the most part, any reasonable plantings that are there, um, whether they're scrubby and, and bushy or, you know, they don't have to be a specimen tree, but you know, they're, they're buffer, um, quality that they, um, remain. And they're not in the stipulated, um, stipulation. It is that they do not remove those, um, any planting that doesn't have to be removed in order to plant something new.
And, um, exhibit, if you look at exhibit, it does contain a plant in West.
How about, remember the amount of vehicles on property? That was an issue back then? Or might crossing this all up? Like this has been so many times.
I'd have to look at that. We're doing, you have a, you had a copy of that. Mine's gone.
Several pictures of the other presentations, all the... All the bigger trucks that will take your cars and more wheels on a road.
So in terms of the vehicles, and I'm sorry, I just wanted my copy. But in terms of the vehicles, that was an element of the cease and desist order. And if you look again at the beginning of paragraph seven insofar as the need to comply with the variance approval, the stipulated approval location with regard to restrictions on the vehicles and obviously the site plan approval that they are operating under, they do need to comply with that. And that is, that's part of the terms, so.
One of the things in that, this Maureen speaking, one of the things about the order was that on their plan, they had cleared the area and were parking vehicles in that area. They have ceased doing that for the most part. When I go out there, you know, a couple of times a month, I drive by or to drive by and see. And they are no longer using that area. But the plan is designed such that that area is blocked and then they can't use it. And they're planting trees within it again. So that's really the crux of what the parking of additional vehicles was. It was parking in an area that wasn't approved for their storage of vehicles. I had to get prompted to.
Maureen, you know this, but I'm-
And I realized you have my screen.
Agenda, probably at least eight or 10 times.
A number of times, yes.
As the people that live in the area, I know that we have records of who came in and spoke and had some discussions regarding, you know, their problems. Have they seen a copy of the stipulation? Or is there... I mean, I know it's probably public, right?
It has been posted online, and I actually want to say that there were some, a few modifications, mostly clarifications that happened since the one that got distributed in your packet. It has, there's a couple of revisions that were made. You made some tweets. You added dates.
I was wondering if some of the residents were made aware that this is available to them.
So it was the agenda and telling them about the meeting was emailed out. However, I think Corporation Counsel made the comment that by affording it to hold to the next meeting, they'll have a longer opportunity to review it as well.
Okay.
And if we do get any proposed revisions back from counsel or the Plenta, we will circulate a red line copy if there's anything that they propose to change. So that way you can consider those changes as well.
That sounds equitable to me. Fine.
What is Commissioner White said? What are the possible actions of the board related to the judgment?
So in terms of what action you're to take on this, is you would be authorizing me to sign the stipulation for judgment as your counsel on your behalf and file it with the board? So that's essentially the motion you would make. And I'll remind you of that when you go to act on it.
Right, because the suit is against the board.
Yes.
It's always against the board.
Yes. But again, you know, given what's at issue here, we thought that it was appropriate, staff and I, that the commission needed to approve the vegetative buffer restoration plan, which is why we took it to them first, so that you would know that they were satisfied with what was proposed. Because they had seen different versions of it as well, because they're, again, going back some time now. There was an application to bring a new business there. There was a proposal with regard to reestablishing the buffer at that time as well.
Okay.
At least a little better.
So if you could please, Mr. Chair, call for a motion to continue this matter to your November 23 meeting. And we will make sure that it gets, again, re-noticed for receipt of public comment. And if we do receive any proposed revisions from counsel, again, we will circulate a red line copy as well as a red line copy for the public. And as I said earlier, when I first started speaking, staff has communicated via email with interested members of the public. They have circulated this job copy, but they will circulate it in red line copy as well.
Okay, Consular, based on your recommendation and your comments, presentation, I'll make a motion to continue this to the November 23 meeting of the ZBA. At that point, we can hopefully put it to bed.
I'll second it.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion? For the discussion? If not, Maureen, can you take a roll, please?
Commissioner Tubbs?
Aye.
Chairman Frank Langia?
Aye.
Mr. Whiteside?
Aye.
Mr. Zell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mazada?
Aye.
Unanimous to continue.
Okay. Thank you. The only thing that I have left is on the agenda is the minutes for July, June. And I believe July, I had two meetings. There was a meeting in August. There was a regular meeting and a special meeting in July. The June meeting. Let's see, Leonard Tubbs, myself, and Ryan are the three people seated. We could remember, we could... If you want to approve the June meeting, we could approve the June meeting minutes.
So if I just can add, while you're looking at the minutes, or each of you for the meetings you are at or not at, I just went through the list. And as Commissioner Capola and Commissioner Braca are no longer on the board, I believe you have the majority for all of the minutes present. So if minutes have been reviewed, the people present for those, on each of those meetings, can vote on them.
Okay. Any comments on the June meeting, June 22nd, 2021? I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Maureen?
So Chairman?
Aye.
Commissioner Tubbs?
Aye.
Commissioner Zell?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. July, a regular meeting, July 27th. Well, we have a special meeting on July 26th for Harbors Hill Road. July 6th on Harbors Hill Road. That was a special meeting. I don't know if you remember that. This was variance for bedroom relocation. I'll make a motion to approve those meetings for July 6th, meeting minutes for July 6th.
Second, Whiteside.
Maureen, can you take a roll? I think everybody's okay with that.
Chairman?
Aye.
Commissioner Whiteside? And Commissioner Zell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the July 27th meeting. This was a meeting that I was absent at. This was the KMK Plumbing and Heating Property Maintenance and, I believe, 379 Main Street East Berlin and 359 Ford Road. Again, I was absent at this meeting, so I not really have any comments on it other than the fact that some would like to make a motion to approve these.
So present and still on the board is Whiteside and Mazada.
A motion to approve. Oh, well, we don't have... Do we even have... Can we approve the minutes with two out of the four?
The other four are no longer on the board, so we have to. Yes, you may.
So do I have a second from Commissioner Mazada?
Yep, I second.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Commissioner Mazada, Commissioner Whiteside?
Aye.
And Commissioner Whiteside? Okay, I just heard you say yes.
Aye.
Okay. Wasn't sure. Okay, and then the last one is the...
Two more. Oh, two more.
I'm sorry, there's a regular meeting for September, but there's a special meeting in August, which was for the story, one-story addition for 393 Main Street East Berlin. This was back in August 9th.
If I may, again, this is Whiteside, Zell, and Mazada.
Right, right.
Motion to approve, Whiteside.
Zell will second.
I believe-
A motion made and seconded.
The motion?
Yeah, the motion made and seconded. And Commissioner Zell, Whiteside, and Mazada, are you all in favor? You can speak.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. That's good. And then we have the September 28th, 2021 meeting. This is the Kern Realty Design on Farmington Avenue and the Meadow Lane Peterbilt Motor Vehicle Use. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes, September 28th, 2021.
Seconds, Whiteside.
Any discussion? If not, Maureen, you can call a roll on this, please.
Chairman?
Aye.
28?
Yep.
Okay, so that would be a correction to that meeting, the September 28th. Sorry for that.
What happened? I'm sorry, what was that?
I think I was zooming that night, maybe.
Perhaps you were. Okay, so the correction to the minutes that Leonard Tubbs, co-Vice Chairman, has moved up to being a member present at the meeting?
Yes, he was. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you were... Okay, I got it. Yeah, you were a few minutes late.
Sorry for that error. Neither Kristen or I caught it. And so I'll call the roll. Chairman Frank Langia?
Aye.
Commissioner Whiteside?
Aye.
Mr. Tubbs?
Aye.
And the 19th minutes have not been approved yet. We just got them back. It was only a week. We're good.
Okay. Do we have any more business for today?
Staff has nothing further.
entertain a motion to close the hearing or close the meeting of the ZBA.
Second.
The motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all.
And the time is 8:11.
Will we get another copy for the first two items that we're postponing, or should I save these?
It's always best if you try to save them. However, we will do our best to redistribute as well.
Okay.
I noted that.
Is the next meeting going to be at the Town Hall, or is it going to be Zoom?
So at this point, the Town Hall policy is that unless meetings are fully remote, by... They are being held hybrid, which is in-person in Town Hall and also available by Zoom conference call or video.
It's-
So we're still doing the hybrid meetings, so for everyone's comfort and and COVID protocols for anyone who may not be able to get to a meeting.
I'm probably dating myself, but I like the being able to go to the Town Hall.
That's certainly preferable to me, too. I'm just spending my time today.
Yeah, it's nice. It's a little bit better because you're more in person, I think. I don't know. It's, I'm probably, like I said, I'm probably dating myself because I'm more used to having a meeting, live meeting. But the Zoom does work okay.
I'd like to just like to comment on that. I actually, my first cousin passed away from getting the shot. And I am not immunized, and I don't want to offend or concern anyone. So I prefer the remote way, because if I have to get, you know, this, this, this... What is it called? Oh, my word. Help me.
Vaccine?
Yes, vaccine. Thank you, thank you. If I am required to get a vaccine to attend the meetings, God hasn't put on my heart to do that yet, so I'm not gonna. So I prefer this, so I can respect everyone.
I respect that because there's a lot of people that... I have relatives that they're not not very happy about getting a vaccine. I guess they're a little bit concerned about it because it's been, I guess it's gone to market too quickly. I'm not sure how else to say it, but it's, there's some people that are concerned about it because of various number of reasons.